I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna take a few moments and review your minutes from February the eighth.
Yes, I mean, these are just the oath of office for our deputies. Kevin and Chris and Michael. This is the first public hearing for the wastewater or stormwater project. It'll be before our next meeting, April the...
That's your rule.
She's slipped over today.
We have a public meeting on the 12th?
Yeah, that's right before our council meeting. It was just a... we have to have two, I think.
Yeah.
Carol, I did not get your email yet.
Okay.
So, I'll watch for it, though. I can check it on my phone.
Okay.
Have you had a chance to review minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from February eighth, 2022, as written.
I'll second it.
We moved and seconded to approve the minutes from February eighth, meeting as presented. Is there anything under question? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Go around the room for public comments. Rob, I guess you're a public.
Okay. I contacted you and then forwarded the information for the equipment that failed recently. And I forwarded that to Natalie. And then you contacted the insurance agent, Lori. And I stopped by Friday and gave her manuals to the equipment that was specifically impacted. So, I just need to be able to move forward with, you know, repair or slash replacement. And then also, just since I'm here, I mean, we'll be doing the usual spring expenditures, calibration of the flow meter and E coli stuff. So, there'll be some POs submitted for that stuff as well. That way, you're aware of it, Natalie.
I already got a bill from Alpha Liberty.
Yep, the annual scale calibration.
Yep, I got that, so. I haven't heard from Lori. Did you drop stuff off to her here?
I dropped it off at the office on Friday.
Okay.
She was not in. They said she was off on Fridays.
If it's covered, we can go ahead and if we replaced, turn the bill into them. And they'll pay us minus the deductible, I assume.
Right.
Then also, along with that, you and I discussed last year doing the notification, that basically changing the dialer, doing away with the internet, and then also being able to include the Vine Street into that monitoring through what's...
Yes, we talked about that.
And I have a quote updated as of Friday. I contacted BL Anderson on that. So, I could submit that. And then that was all only equipment, not labor. So, we'd have to outsource the electrical. And I had spoken with Brian Davis at Sycamore that same weekend in regards to it. And he said that he could create a time, make it a time and materials job. So, you know, more if he'd be a rough estimate of what he thought it was gonna be.
Okay.
Maybe not to exceed or something like that. But I was gonna talk to you about that if we were to move that direction, which I think would be better in the long run. And it utilizes cellphone communications instead of that phone line, which is...
Through the landline?
Yeah. And then, so you'd offset a little bit of it on the turn-on investment through not having the phone bill, but you'd have the annual cellphone monitoring. And that would also, like I said, now there's nothing on the Vine Street unit other than just an analog horn and strobe. But it would also be tied in and be able to be looked at or controlled through. And it could actually be done by any of us through our phones. It's that state-of-the-art automated jail to look at.
So, you got a price now?
I have a price for the equipment, not the labor. And I can forward that to Natalie. I could do that right now.
Yeah, that'd be all right.
So, for both of the units and the first year's monitoring, it looks like it's sixty-one hundred and forty-six dollars and maybe cents. Plus, like I said, having that installed, which is a one-time expense to a contractor. And he's, Brian's done several of these mission state systems.
Was that annual?
No.
That's just installation?
Yeah, that's just the equipment. The annual cost, I believe, in here is... It looks like it's a hundred and twenty dollars for the monitoring, I think. But... It has one-year self-website fee. It says sixty each.
What was the equipment cost?
That was all inclusive, but as...
What?
One number, sixty-one forty-six eighty. And we can have Dave Boach, or however you say his last name, to come out. And even with the, I think they have a portable module that shows how it could work or something like that as well, if you'd like, and do a demonstration. I've seen it at conferences before, so I'm familiar with it, so.
Well, seeing as how we don't have somebody there full-time, I think it would be in our best interest to have something like that. And you don't have to depend on the AT&amp;T line.
Yeah, it's not dependable.
Which we've had trouble with them before, too.
Can I eliminate the phone as well with that, Rob?
Yeah, I mean, phone and internet, yeah. I don't see a need, because everyone has a cellphone anymore anyway.
Right. So, your phone and your internet out there, your internet costs forty-two dollars a month, and the phone is about seventy-five a month now, so.
So, about fifteen hundred dollars a year in phone service, so.
Yeah.
But I'm not positive, the way this is written out on the cellular fee up, no, here up the top, it has more, but it's three hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents per year for one-year cellular website fee. And then there's cellular website fee for modules. And I don't, so we might need some clarification. But still, the, I would say you're looking at three hundred and forty-seven dollars. Even if it's double for each side, that's still cheaper than your phone bill for and internet for out there.
And hopefully, it'd be more reliable.
All right, I've got that down under new business.
And I'll forward, I'll forward that to both of you. I'll send it to both of your emails.
Okay. Anybody else have a public comment back there? Okay. Let's move now to old business. Under old business, the first thing I got down is what we forgot to do last month was elect board officers and point department heads. I had thought about it before the meeting, and I didn't write it down, so I forgot about it during the meeting. So, at this time, I would take nominations for president of the board. Don't everybody speak at once.
I nominate John McMullin.
I second that.
I accept the nomination. Is there another nomination for board president? Another nomination for board president? Hearing none? I assume that position's filled. Vice president of the board? It is John at the present time, right?
Yes.
Can't nominate Cody, can we?
Well, he can't refuse it.
He's the one that's working late tonight.
I don't know that it's improper. But if that's what you want to do, we can do that.
I think we'll just do that. I nominate Cody Mason for vice president.
Show him up for not showing up, right?
Well, he probably didn't know there was elections, see?
I'm totally gonna text you now.
He'll be here next year, won't he?
Third second for that?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any more nominations for vice president? Any more nominations for vice president?
Yeah, probably.
Nomination's closed. Do you have Cody for vice president of the board? We don't have any other officers, do we?
No.
Okay. Department heads, everybody happy with the department they have? Anybody want to change?
I'm good.
No, good.
Cody, again, does not get a chance to say, so.
I think he's fine with the park, yeah.
Okay. The department heads will stay as they were last year. Okay. Next item I got is a dump truck, dump truck fixed?
No, it's not. I got a phone call today about that. As he got the bed up completely, the, where your hydraulic cylinder attaches to the crossmember, that broke, it twisted that plate. So, he wants me to come out Thursday to make sure I see what's going on. And then he's going to, I mean, it's gonna cost a little bit more, 'cause right now, if he doesn't fix the plate, then the truck's useless.
Does he need a whole new crossmember?
It's something he can make.
Yeah.
But it's probably gonna need a whole new system all the way across. The original quote was for getting the bed up, bracing it, using that material, cutting things out, welding new plates in to secure the crossmember, 'cause right now, it's flipped. So, I'll know more Thursday about that.
Well, that should add a little to it, yes. Okay. All right. Water meter reading computer.
Well, I haven't ordered anything because of just ARP plan stuff. So, we can go over that whenever you want to talk about the ARP plan and how we want to spec out that money. I don't know if that's old business or if it's gonna be under new business or what.
Well, I'd say it's probably under old business. We've been doing a lot of stuff with that.
So, for your ARP money, so I talked to Scott Craig yesterday. He and I have been missing each other. He was gone, I was gone, things like that. They've changed ARP money, 'cause they have to change everything a million times. And so, now, your ARP money can be counted as lost revenue, up to ten million dollars. So, they've kind of made it a little more broad by doing that and what you can use the money for, since you're calling it lost revenue. So, but every time you use money from there, you have to do an additional appropriation. So, Scott has to write a plan for us and Dana and like the other communities that he covers that allows us to put that money in broadly. Whereas before, we had to go through and we had to create a plan, and every line had to be exactly what we were gonna use it for and all of that stuff. So, we won't have to do that now, but we will have to do an additional appropriation every time we use it, which you're gonna have to do the additional appropriation and the plan. So, we do need to wait for a plan from Scott. He said if we felt like we really needed to order something now, we could, and just catch up next month, 'cause he'll have all that ready for us for April. But he said if we can wait, that's fine, too. So, I might go ahead and order the computer, because I don't know how long they'll hold that price. And then I'll touch base with Matt Kingery on the meter software. But the rest of the money, I mean, we committed, if we get the grant, we committed a big chunk of it to the stormwater project. So, we know we don't need to spend that right now, 'cause we won't even know till we get the grant. And we committed five thousand dollars to pay Christie Gerald for the environmental study. And we don't pay her for that just yet either. So, I'm not really worried about that. But that's the way the ARP money has kind of played out. So, it opens up the realm of what we can use it for going forward. So, we're to get a hundred and sixty thousand. We already got eighty. We'll get our other eighty in May. And so, we've committed like a hundred and ten. So, we'll have some more money to play with, to do some other stuff with, so.
So, it's better, but it's not?
Yeah, it's just, it's just changed. It's just like the CARES Act money. It came in, and then it changed so much along the way. And if they... A lot's being dumped on clerk treasurers these days. I mean, we just keep getting more directives and more webinars. And the annual financial report, they add like two new sections to it this year. And then they decide to dump all the ARP stuff in over the last couple of months as we were trying to finish all of our year-end work. So, I didn't understand they changed it like that. And I was listening to that webinar, but I'm glad I talked to Scott today, so.
Okay, thank you. Did you find a price, Jace, on a camera inspection for wastewater lines?
No, I did have, I had him out on Monday or Tuesday, maybe Wednesday, to jet Main Street from the Civic Center south. Civic Center was backing up again. So, when Gary came out and snaked it, he got into our main and he found a block there, that house, in front of that house, south of the Civic Center. And I spaced bringing it up when I had him on the phone, bringing it up again. So, I can call him and tell him.
We already have a price on that, on the subdivision. Yes, it's a thousand dollars to camera it. And then when he comes and does the camera, he'll also bring his jet truck. And he said if he has to jet something out, he can do it at the same time. And he said like, even if he has to jet it out, the whole thing wouldn't cost more than fifteen hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I did get the price. I forgot.
You did get the price.
Forgot to schedule that when I had him on the phone.
Yes, he wanted to wait till it got a little bit warmer.
Sorry.
So, yes.
Well, as soon as it warms up, go for it.
Yeah, so.
Well, that'll have to be quick.
Yeah.
Well, I meant, and stay warm. Well, if you want to do it tomorrow or the next day, that's fine, too.
Yeah, so.
Is that warm enough?
I don't know. That stuff don't freeze under the ground. If it back, back flows against you, it'll be cold after you have it on you for a while. Okay. I guess you gave me a stormwater project update. We're gonna have a public hearing on that on April the 12th at 7:00 PM. Is that meeting night?
Yes. So, it's right, it's right at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay.
You know how our public hearings are prepared normally.
Anyhow, we've got a notice of the hearing that'll be appearing in the Sentinel, I assume.
Yes.
Tell them about it.
So, is the hearing earlier?
No.
No, we just have it at seven. We'll start our meeting late, later. If there's no more people here in the round tonight, it won't take long for that hearing.
On the stormwater project, she did narrow down the area. She sent a map, I don't have it out here, of the area of houses that would benefit. And then Jace did a count of all of those households. It's like a hundred and seventy-six is what he came up with. And then she sent me around, I took some pictures of some houses in town. And it's just all about showing our income level. We do not have to do an income survey, which we talked about. We will actually qualify by census.
Oh.
So.
Good.
Yeah, so we don't have to do that door-to-door survey stuff.
Yeah, okay. Have any bites on selling that backhoe for that?
We haven't listed yet.
We haven't tried to sell it yet, and that's my fault.
Okay.
Kind of forgot about it. I did have one person call in town about it, but he, it wouldn't work for him. So, we'll get that listed the next week.
Yeah, there's probably not a whole lot of tractors that's gonna fit on.
Yeah, he was asking if it was like hydraulic or PTO or something like that. It's hydraulic, isn't it? Hey, Jace, is the backhoe attachment hydraulic?
It is.
Okay. Yeah.
I know.
Yeah.
Okay, did you have a chance to see anything about that front door?
No, I haven't had him look at the door either. Jace plowed a bunch of snow, and then I've been busy, and so, I'm gonna work on with him Friday.
We haven't had much snow since last month's meeting.
Well, we haven't done some sanding, and it's really me that's been busy.
Okay. All right. Anybody have anything under old business they want to discuss? Anything under old business?
Is, Cody sent a trail update.
He did?
He did. He's been, so Cody is the liaison with Mark Davis.
Yeah.
Since Mark was out the last Trail Association, I guess this is old business, too. Mark has said that, at this point, because of utilities, they're looking to place the pedestrian portion of the bridge on North Main on the west side, since water and sewer and gas is all on the east side. They do not want to have to relocate utilities.
So, does that mean that the walk bridge that's there now will be dismantled and made wider?
I believe so, in some respect. We still don't know, unless...
'Cause we haven't ever heard anything from the county about replacing that bridge. But we know that that's one of their future...
Right, but I think they're supposed to. So, the way Mark explained it to me kind of after the meeting was, it's kind of the thought, in talking to the engineering firm that the county works with on their bridges, that the pedestrian bridge they want to build is wide enough for traffic. So, the thought was to build the pedestrian bridge and use it as a means of transportation in and out of town while they replace the other bridge. Does that make sense?
So, it's one lane and theoretically, the same width as what we've got now.
Right, so, that's, just see what I mean? So, that's kind of what he and I talked about after the meeting.
So, that will involve, like, taking more land with the old lumberyard property and...
I don't really think so. I don't really think particularly it will really affect them too much. The county bridge will not, I wouldn't think. I don't really think it will, so. I don't really think I thought about that, Becky, 'cause you'll just come off, you know. I don't know. I'm not on the engineering side of that.
It looks to me like, without measuring anything, there would be room to do that. Because that, the walk bridge across there is a good ways away from the vehicle bridge.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
All right, any other old business? All right, let's go to new business, and we'll attack the alarm system that Rob's asking about. So, we really don't know for sure total cost, right?
Right, the labor portion has not been quoted yet. I can work on that tomorrow. I, again, it was just, when this occurred, it just kind of, I, we had waited before. I had my part with the quote done, basically a year ago. And then Natalie had mentioned maybe the water side would want to be on it, too. And I spoke with Gary twice and with no, no results, so. And then with this coming up, now, I've just focused on my problem with the wastewater plant right now. But, and just generally spoke with Brian last weekend from Sycamore Engineering and got a general, general idea about it, because I still didn't know where we were gonna stand and where we were gonna go with it.
Yeah.
But...
Well, I, personally, I am in favor of the different dialing system. I would like to know what the whole cost is gonna be, shared to approve of it.
I would say, just to be very high on it, no more than four thousand dollars in labor. I, that would, I think it's gonna be less than that, but...
Well, I would, I would hope they would be more efficient than that.
But I'm just saying, if you're looking at...
It is, it is about ninety dollars an hour for electrician with all the benefits and everything. So, yeah.
I'd be in favor of us just going ahead and getting the equipment and then do the install on a separate. That way, he can at least move forward with something. And we can... That way he can at least move forward with something and we can be prepared.
Well.
And then if he needs to shop around on the electricians or whatever, we could, you know what I'm saying?
Ground's been pretty good to me.
It wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to think about that.
What?
John thinks we oughta go ahead and buy the equipment and then see what the installation's gonna be.
Uh, maybe, we have to shop around.
Okay.
On the, on the installation of it, at least have the equipment where he gets a good deal on it now versus waiting until later. So, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and purchase.
The guy that's selling us the equipment, is he wanting to do it himself or?
He, they can do it, but they're gonna sub, they're gonna subcontract up the electrical aspect of it anyway. So, he's worked with Sycamore Engineering on many of these systems and.
So, if we just buy the equipment and don't have, go with the labor with him, it's not gonna be a problem?
No, I mean, if you're just gonna have another electrician do it, it's the only, the, the largest advantage is that he's done several for Dave at, uh, B L Anderson. So, they work well together and they basically know what, you know, what's what and how.
That oughta make it quicker.
Yeah.
They oughta be more efficient.
That's right, they should be.
They oughta come in on the money that we need then.
I mean, I'm just guessing, I was just trying to go over on the cost.
Yeah.
If you're trying to really set numbers right now. Then also, I mean, as far as new business associated with that as well, the chart recorder was one of the other items that was, I think, damaged by electrical or, you know, the lightning or whatever that went on. And, uh, I do not have a quote on that, cause I, again, was waiting to kinda get some direction on it. But I can get all of that compiled. And then, uh, living water people could come out and service the chlorine and de-chlor monitoring, which both of those had troubles on them after that too. I come out, the alarms were going off on that.
Yeah.
And the chart recorder didn't work.
If lightning hit out there, it's gonna affect just about everything out there.
And then also, I mean, along with the new chart recorder, we didn't have a problem with our main chart recorder. And I, we had in the past, but we put surge suppression on that. And, I mean, it's a probably about a, a thirty-five hundred dollar chart recorder. So, it would be worth adding that surge suppression to it as well. But that's not that expensive, but it definitely saves the life of the chart recorder.
Alright, I've got a motion to purchase the equipment for sixty-one forty-six eighty per second. Becky?
Are you including the annual subscription in the site fee?
Hmm?
Yeah, that's all included in there, that's the site fee and everything too. The actual equipment pricing's at the top.
Yeah, pretty well covers everything.
Okay.
Let's then move the segment to buy the equipment for the new, uh, alarm notification system for the wastewater and also for the lift station at the, on Vine Street. Question? All in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carried. Oh, anybody opposed? I didn't think so, motion carried. Alright, other new business?
I, I don't know, do we buy mosquito spray under department? Or is that new business?
Well, we can buy, we can buy here.
Do you know how much he went through here?
Well.
A barrel and a half, I think.
Well, I know last year he ordered a bunch of boxes, but had a brand new barrel sitting there.
That, that's what I'm not, I'm, that's what I was gonna ask, so. I just got notification from Clark on their early pricing and we always use their early pricing, cause it does save us. Um, and I signed Jace up for mosquito class today, so he goes April the seventh to Perdue. Um, and then, so last year the barrel, last year we spent twenty-three seventy-six, twenty-three in two thousand twenty-one. Chris Nowak did not send me the price with this, I thought it was on the flyer, but apparently it's not, it's just a six percent off flyer. But then Jace said we still have like forty gallons from last year.
I have two boxes and a brand new barrel, so roughly forty gallons.
How much is in that barrel?
I'm gonna say it's thirty gallon barrel.
Thirty?
And it's full?
It's full.
See, the boxes, one year, they didn't have any more barrels, they had a packaging issue, so that's where we got the boxes from. And the boxes are not the Coco Bear boxes, right?
No, it's what I used.
Okay, cause there are a couple boxes of Coco Bear out there. Cause when I sprayed mosquitoes, um, with Justin, I noticed there was some of that out there too. So, I don't know if we should buy or not.
How long's, uh, six percent good for?
End of the month. So, I mean, just six percent? Jace, you did spray last year, didn't you, or no?
One time, maybe two.
Yeah, I don't remember how much you used during one spray.
Uh, I dumped in one jug.
I was gonna say, I think we dumped in one jug too.
I never run out, so.
No.
Yeah. If it's twenty-six percent off.
Okay, let's hold then.
Let's, let's hold off on it.
Yeah, let's hold, okay.
Sounds like you got enough for one season.
Well, if you spray once a week per month throughout the season, you're looking at ten gallon per month.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. Um, that was on my list. And then, um, so the tornado siren, the emergency siren. Um, when we had the snow, the pretty good snowstorm, the county tested all the sirens before that and ours was reading low battery. So, Jace went out and tried to wire up the solar panels.
Rewired the solar panel.
Batteries are not charging, nothing's charging. So, we need new batteries. How much were they?
You're looking about five hundred bucks.
So, unless someone.
How many are there, six of them?
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
How long they last?
Well, if they're properly charged, they last a long time.
Yeah, but they stopped charging and I, I asked EMS, I emailed them and asked them if they would let me know if it was still reading that after Jace hooked the panels up, but they never emailed me again, but he said it's, that they're not charging.
Well, it'd be, I know I rewired it, I did, it was simple enough, but Roger just said, could it be the charging system that's not working? But, I, I'm not an electrician, I don't know anything about solar energy.
Well, was the panels putting out a voltage?
It's not, it's not reading that, it's, that the battery is, the only meter you have is a battery meter. Um, and it's, it's showing they're dead, so.
What I'm, what I mean is, through a multimeter, you should be able to get a voltage coming from the solar panels.
Should be some way to check that.
Yeah.
To make sure it's putting voltage to them.
Right, and if it is, uh, it should be charging. If it's not putting one out, then there's something wrong with the charging.
I, I, I would assume the battery.
All you gotta do is unhook where it goes into the batteries and check those two leads.
I'll check it tomorrow.
Alright. The electric chargers don't work either?
I know nothing about the system.
Well.
Yeah.
They, they had a electric, uh, charging system and the solar was where that failed.
Then I would say, either they're both not working or the batteries are dead enough, they won't take a charge.
Won't take a charge.
Well, where are they getting power from? Like, where was the electric charging station getting power from?
There's no electric in that pump house?
I don't know.
No, they're, the electric still works in that.
Does it let, okay.
I thought so.
Okay. Do I pay a bill on it?
I think it comes from the other pump house.
Other building, okay, okay.
Yeah.
I guess I'm like, do I, there's power on here?
There was, there was a line buried, uh, when the new one was put up.
Okay. Okay.
They're already dead, they'll reset.
Got it.
No, and don't question him about a bill.
I'm not going to, yeah, so.
Okay, any other new business?
Um, this is not new business, but this is, so I've, I've learned, so in two thousand and eighteen, um, wastewater loaned water twenty-five thousand dollars. Alright, and at the time, um, Gary Hammer was our town attorney and we did that resolution ourself, based upon the state statute of mandals in Austin and she and I wrote it. And we said we would pay it back in five years if we felt like we needed to. Well, through the stormwater grant process, um, I've learned that we should've paid that back in a year. Okay, that we couldn't do the five-year thing. Um, I talked to Scott.
But we couldn't have done it.
Right, no, it wouldn't have been helpful, so what, this is what would've happened, this is what he said, this is what people do. And I don't think I would've probably gained this information from Gary. Um, I don't, but Scott said that what, what utilities do in this situation is they pay the loan back at the end of the year and then the next year they just issue another loan if they need to. So, so we need to pay it back, basically, is what I'm saying. And at this point in time, water utility operating is, it's standing at fifty-one thousand eight seventy-two. It is gaining, um.
But it lost this month.
It did lose this month and.
Well, since Thursday, it has lost.
Well, it, it always loses in January because all the interns were news.
All the interns, yeah.
Yeah, and it's gonna show that it lost in February, but it didn't lose in February. I just did everyone's paychecks for the council early and it just came out of February money because I was leaving, so. But it gained in February technically, cause it'll, you know.
So, it still has twenty-six thousand?
It still have twenty-six thousand, but that's, that's where we're at. I talked to Scott about it today.
Well, you know, we had talked about maybe making adjustment in the rates too, which we didn't, never have done.
We adjusted the water rates.
We, we was talking about doing it the next year also.
We were gonna look at it and review it after a year.
We did it, we did it once and then we didn't do it again, we did it two times since we, yeah. We adjusted water rates twice.
But it's standing on its own right now with the rate we're at?
I mean, it's, it appears to be standing on its own. Um, I mean, twenty-six thousand is a pretty good chunk if we take the, if we give the twenty-five back. We, I mean, we kinda have twenty-five back, it's kinda what I was told.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, as far as.
Can we borrow it back?
If we needed to borrow it back, we could. Um, and I, I anticipate being audited sometime in the near future, because we haven't been audited since I started in eighteen and we were audited through seventeen at that point in time. Um, so, you know, we're probably due for an audit, which is completely fine with me, because I can use some guidance. Um, but in the, in the audit, they'll just, it'll just be an audit comment that we shouldn't pay it back, so. I'm saying now we just need to pay it back.
Well, that doesn't require our action, does it?
I don't know, someone can make a motion to pay it back.
I, I will make a motion that we pay back the, the loan from the wastewater.
I'll second that.
Just, just to cover us.
You guys hear somebody knocking?
I did, Carol.
Locks, right idea.
Is that door locked?
I don't know.
When Kevin came in, you locked the door behind you?
It didn't, it didn't sound like, it sounded like it was that way and not that way, but yeah.
That one sounded like.
The first one was back there.
Oh. Was it locked somewhere in the pantry?
No, they won't go hungry.
Locked doors, that cuts down on public comment. There you go.
Uh, it's been moved the second to pay back the waterworks system for the loan they granted to the wastewater system. They're not putting any money in there.
Twenty-five thousand.
Well, I know what it was.
Okay.
They're just paying back the loan.
Mm-hmm.
Can we use that A R P money to cushion that back up, since it is a loss?
I don't think, I don't think we can use it to cushion it.
Okay.
Well, that's gonna make the wastewater have a good bit of money and so.
Wastewater will have a good bit of money.
They'll be able to buy that stuff real easily.
That should be, yeah, that is a, a plus on that, so.
Uh, all in favor of the motion I read, signify with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Post the same sign? Motion carried. Other new business?
Um, no, not really. I think I'm done.
Okay. We'll move now to what, uh, department reports. Uh, underwater, we had ninety-two penalties generated and no shut-off.
Yeah, uh, shut-offs are coming next week. It's kinda hard to shut off in the winter like that, so.
Do you have any issues other than your lightning at the wastewater plant?
No, I, when I.
Can we get a battery for wherever, whatever needed one of those in the generator?
That was the water generator.
Oh, okay.
Well, we, we got the generator under contract, so I haven't had any problems with that. And, uh, but, uh, when the weather gets better, uh, just some packing on the driveway, it's real, it's really nasty out there with the trash truck and everything. But I brought that up in January, but I mean, that's just not the time for it, but the trash truck's just been pretty rough on the
Yeah.
all of that.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, having any issues with the water company? Had any leaks? That's good. Uh. I haven't talked to Gary for a long, long time. Okay, any, uh, report, street department?
I have nothing new.
What?
I have nothing new.
Nothing new.
Um.
Did you do some, what I was today, it was, I was, this is for last month.
Mm-hmm.
There wasn't any tree trimming going on, was there?
No, I burnt brush that I trimmed from last time.
Did you get that big brush pile burnt back there?
No.
Okay.
Didn't set off any alarms this time.
Okay. Well, I think if there gets to be some time, some of the sand that's been put on the roads and everything have built up. So, some of it needs to be scooped up and taken out behind the cemetery, dumped. I mean, I'm I know on Main Street, there's quite a bit. And I think there's some along, uh, Central Street too. So. That's a project you can take on.
We were talking about getting a, a blower, a leaf blower type thing. One of those backpack ones that would be strong enough to help sweep that all up and.
Well, I want it not on the side of the road.
Yeah.
So, that blower's not gonna help much, is it? Just blow it out of the road into the side?
When, I mean, you could, like on a mansion, you could get it blown into a pile and scoop it up, couldn't you?
Yeah, maybe so. There's also a thing called broom.
Yeah.
That works real good on that.
There's a lot of it though. We've got some communities, we got some community service workers, we were talking about that the other day.
Oh, we do?
We, we have a couple that supposedly need some hours.
Oh, well, that's a good thing for them to do.
Do we need new brooms?
So, John, are you talking about like down by your house, what we were talking about on the phone yesterday?
It's, it's all along Main Street, actually.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
The, we're, we're, it built up, water can't go into the ditch.
Right.
Because of
Yeah.
how high, there's a dam between the
Yeah.
ditch and the road.
It's a berm, for sure.
Yeah, berm, that's it, I couldn't think of that word.
How do you, how do you guys wanna tackle the big potholes down on South Main Street? Jace has talked about some, what's the patch?
Just coal patch.
Mm-hmm.
What I used last year, but it's gotta be. What I used last year, but it's gotta be fairly hot out to use it.
Do you ever use any of that tack oil?
I never have.
Well, that would help also.
What I put out last year, it stayed pretty well.
Well...
But it was...
What I'd like to see is take the concrete saw down there and square it all off and have a big, a big patch rather than a whole bunch of little patches. Cause otherwise, let's just build a speed bump to slow cars down.
How about a rough pavement sun?
Rough pavement sun, yeah. Yeah.
That's cheap.
I like it.
But that's, that's where I'd like to, to see.
So, if we did that, I think we probably need some kind of a roller or something, do you think?
Yep. Uh, you can rent rollers at Cahill's. Or if we can find one on One Man's Crep or something that works.
And we'll do some trading, trading higher tech.
Trade it, yeah, trade tobacco for a roller. I know Randy, Randy Tracer had one for a long time. He was trying to get rid of it.
Oh, a roller?
Yeah.
You can rent a roller for the front of the skid loaders. Justin rents one sometimes and those work really well.
But that's, that's how that needs to be fixed out.
Yeah, I mean, we've just band-aided it for so long.
Yeah.
It's, yeah. I mean, I know it's being complained about, so...
We're talking about digging that out too.
Yeah, that's what he's saying, take that sand along the side and, yeah.
Is there any kind of easement through the front of that yard?
Well...
I could see if we take a foot off the top of that.
If you hook on the town map how wide it is, measure the road and if the road's not as wide as what it says it is, that's how much it is on each side. But to me, you got, you got to have at least two foot. And there should be a sidewalk down through there. It stops at my house, uh, on the north side of my, the alley there. But if there was a sidewalk going down through there, you'd have all, all of that. And be similar on the other side. Cause it needs to be done on both sides. Anything else? Okay, park department? Any report? Oh, he's not here.
I'd say he doesn't have a report right now.
Fire department?
Uh, they had a total of five runs, one fire, three mid runs and a tree in the roadway run.
Was that in Cox Hill?
Yeah, it was up north of Cox Hill.
And...
Fire was actually over in Lightroom.
The, uh, fireman's breakfast?
Twentieth.
Cemetery report?
We had three burials.
How many?
Three.
That's what they ran in.
Yeah, we had one the month before. So, does that mean we're gonna have two more?
Yeah, probably. No gravesow?
No gravesow, no cremation.
Okay.
And we are talking about doing some gravel on the roads there in the cemetery, so, and...
You're gonna get white rock, aren't you, not gravel?
Yes, that's what I'm...
Huh?
Sorry, white rock.
Slime stone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number eleven.
Number levers? Uh, you got cleanup coming?
Yes, I put a notice in, on the town page.
Do you wanna put that in the newspaper too? Do you wanna put that in the newspaper?
You can, yeah.
Probably be good.
Yeah, I usually do.
Uh, we're going to have clean, Easter's not till April seventeenth this year.
Yeah.
And they'll be mowing before that, so cleanup is the twenty-eighth, March twenty-eighth, and they have to have everything off by the twenty-fifth. March twenty-fifth, March.
March twenty-fifth, have to have everything off and then we'll go start our cleanup on the twenty-eighth.
Okay, I got it.
Yeah, and they can redecorate on Good Friday.
Good Friday, you know, we're gonna update the cemetery rules and post them on our page too, so they can be on there.
Yeah.
Because we've got too much stuff out there now.
There is a lot of stuff out there.
Yeah, we're, you know, and I've been telling people we're gonna have to, um, be a little stricter with our rules because there's...
It makes it difficult for the mowers and...
Yeah, and there's metal stuff.
Weed heaters.
Glass stuff out there that doesn't need to be there.
Yeah.
It's yard ornaments, not grave ornaments.
Yeah, it's not cemetery, cemetery ornaments.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, uh, police department?
Uh, there was a few tickets written, a couple, three tickets written. Uh, one vehicle was impounded. Mike is finished with his defensive tactics training, probably go to the range sometime, hopefully this month. Took him over and bought him a couple pair of pants and a shirt. Pretty much has everything. I did find out today there's possibly some money available through Marathon. So, I'm gonna apply for that actually tomorrow. I gotta email the guy back tomorrow. And I'm working on a form for us to track our own statistics since we're not getting the CAD sheets from the jail anymore.
They don't have them at all?
Not for us. Apparently there's...
Do they have them for anybody?
Yeah, according to what Darla was telling me, there's some departments that it's working for and some that it's not. So, it's been that way since last summer.
Yeah, we have nine of them through one.
Okay. What's your thought on the gun permit thing?
As far as...
Well, what our legislature wants to do, just anybody can carry.
My personal opinion?
Yeah.
I like the idea of having them. All the people that, I think what, I think one thing most people that wanna get rid of a mark thinking about is that's okay if you're in Indiana, but if you wanna go somewhere else, like if you wanna go to Michigan or Kentucky or someplace and take your weapon with you, without a permit, you can't do that.
The permits reciprocate, huh?
Right, there's thirty or thirty-one states, I think, that reciprocate, but if you don't have a permit, you're stuck.
Well, they probably...
I'm all about the Second Amendment, you're right, but I, I don't mind the fact of having a gun permit either.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't have any property issues right now, do we?
No, not at all.
Okay, let's go to the Cork, Cork Treasurers report.
Uh, I finished our annual financial report. I'm actually very proud of it. It's already been advertised in the paper. It's probably the most comprehensive one I've ever done. Um, as far as understanding what it is, they have clarified some of the language. They did add more sections to it because they just continue to add more stuff every time. Um, Larry Tippin was definitely amazing in the capital assets part because I was able to fly through that section. All of his numbers just, he had it all specked out exactly how it was gonna look. And he actually modified it after the, the report came out, so he was totally well worth the time. So, that's been updated, that's been uploaded. Um, I was gone last week. I did hire, uh, Andrea Ushman in the office. She's working out. She worked through vacation. She was great. Um, I have one question on edit money. John, maybe you can answer this. We don't seem to budget our edit money for anything. Do you have any idea why?
I don't remember what it's gonna be used for.
So, we currently have like forty-three thousand dollars in edit money.
Wow.
Yeah, we have a really nice chunk. And the only thing that I can see that we've used it for, we used edit money when we bought the police car. Um, and we used some, it's, it's on the first page, it's four forty-four. And we used some, um, for a community crossings match when we did the big community crossings project. So, we're sitting on a pretty good chunk right there and I just, I was going back through and I didn't really realize how much was there, but we get eleven hundred dollars a month in that.
What is that?
It's economic...
Economic development income tax.
Mm-hmm. So, um...
See, cause we bought the car six years old now.
Yes, and so I, I didn't know, you're the only one I can think of who might know why we don't budget that or why we don't, cause I don't, I don't know either.
It's freaking on a good, um, so...
Okay.
Have a project?
I, I don't necessarily have, I, I have some thoughts, but...
No, I mean, if, if we have a project.
Yeah, but I was thinking, I was thinking that, a couple different things, but our PAMP, I have our PAMP update.
Yeah.
So, at some point in time, we need to look and see if we wanna apply, but if we can use that for a community crossings match and we could do maybe a different kind of project, we could use part of that as well.
Yeah.
So, I'm just putting that out there. I just didn't really know the origins of it.
So, we can get Cock Street in.
So...
I don't think it'll take all that to do that little part.
Yeah, no. But, okay, that was my question, if you had any idea why edit money's there, so, okay. I'm done, that's all I got. I'm gonna start moving offs this week, hoping, hopefully on Friday.
So, are you putting the counter back there?
Mm-hmm, yep. Hey, Ken, did you look and see if you had those moving rollers for me?
I have two.
You have two, okay. Jace has two.
Oh, you mean like treasure dollars?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Oh, I got a pretty, pretty good bag.
Okay.
Oh, look, I think I've got...
You wanna move that safe?
No, not for the safe, for the counter.
Oh.
So, I'm not worried about the safe yet. We have to get a pallet jack from Schott Myers.
Yeah.
Big safe, yeah.
Yeah, probably, you may have to take it out the way we took it in and bring it around to the front.
Yeah.
Cause I'm pretty sure it won't go through that door over there without demolition.
Yeah, I don't know. So, I'm not really worried about moving that right now anyways.
Okay, um...
That's it?
Public comments again? Anybody over here, over here? Nikki? Okay. Chair would accept the motion to pay the bills?
I'm making a motion to pay the bills as presented.
I'll second it.
I think that was CB.
It was.
Then moved in second to pay, to approve payment of the bills as presented. All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Post same sign? Chair would accept the motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Is that Becky?
Yep.
Then regularly moved in second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Post same sign? Motion carried.